We will call to order the Moore City Council meeting scheduled for June 16th at 6:30. Would you call the roll, please?
Kathy Griffith?
Here.
Sid Porter?
Here.
Melissa Hunt?
Louis Williams?
Here.
Adam Webb?
Here.
Rob Clark?
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item two is the Consent Docket. Make a motion, we approve the Consent Docket, items A through I. Second? We've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Sid Porter?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item three is consider approval of the FY 2025-2026 annual budget and adopt Resolution Number 11125.
Mayor and council, we've been through the budget process and so tonight we present the budget for your approval for fiscal year '26. Some of the highlights in the budget, in the general fund, our sales tax is projected to be $35,700,000. This is $400,000 or 1.1% less than the fiscal year '25 budget, even though the fiscal year '25 collections were $36,462,000. The use tax is projected to be $6,050,000. This is $150,000 less than the fiscal year '25 budget. Fiscal year collections for fiscal year '25 were $6,330,000. We scaled these estimates back just because of the slow growth and just to, this is our way to plan for any contingencies of any revenue shortfalls if we go ahead and just budget it that way. If collections improve, then that just gives us more flexibility as the year goes on. Capital outlay of $1,157,000 is budgeted between the departments. The cost of living adjustments are 2.8% for non-union, police 3%, fire 4.3%. For the half-cent sales tax, residential street construction is budgeted for Jordan Drive between southeast 13th and southeast 14th, northeast 7th between Bryant and Allison Avenue, Highland Drive Cedar Lane to 2508 Highland Drive, Nail Parkway northeast 18th to the south of Fox Avenue, Arnold Avenue between northwest 5th and northwest 2nd, northwest 2nd between Norman and Arnold, Chestnut Drive between northeast 2nd and northeast 1st. Joint ceiling, other maintenance and sidewalk maintenance is also budgeted. $1,5015 is budgeted for police capital outlay, including eight new vehicles. $886,538 is budgeted for the fire department, including a modular container training structure. For the quarter cent sales tax and hotel motel, new restrooms at Buck Thomas Park, a Courage League field, parking lot improvements immediately north of the station, additional electrical infrastructure at Buck Thomas Park, playground fence at Central Park, shade pavilion at Little River Park, basketball court at 5th and Markwell Park, drainage improvements at Phillips 66 Park, replacement of the splash pad at Apple Valley. The total budget is $130,611,000. The fiscal year '25 budget was $133,400,000. Individual meetings were held with council members in late April. There were no public comments at the public hearing on June 2nd. Happy to answer any questions. Recommend approval.
Are there any questions? Make a motion to approve? Second. Okay. Would you call the vote, please?
Sid Porter?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item passes and thanks. I know that's a lot of work for you and the department heads and everybody and council. I'm glad we were all able to sit down and work through the budget with you. So appreciate you keeping our city fiscally responsible and preparing for things that we just don't know and being very conservative with our budget. So thanks.
Thank you.
Item four is consider approval of Amendment Number Three in the amount of $12,650 to the agreement with Garver LLC for additional design services and legal descriptions of Eastern Avenue reconstruction projects from northeast 12th Street to southeast 19th Street.
Mayor and council, a couple of reasons for the amendment. One was the Moore Central Church of Christ was concerned that the 10-foot trail that's going in on the east side of Moore might cause some damage or some negative impact to their berm. So we went ahead and revised the design to include a block retaining wall that would protect the berms as well as provide a nicer look for the area. Another was revisions to the legal descriptions. As they went out and began negotiations with several of the property owners, there were a couple instances where we went ahead and tried to accommodate the needs or what the negotiation process was bringing forward and had to review or had to revise for legal descriptions. And then the last item basically was, Third, or Eastern Avenue really is three projects from southwest 19th to, or southeast 19th to 12th Street, northeast 12th Street. And we had to revise some, made some changes at the intersection of 12th to be able, 12th and Eastern to be able to get a greater, a better product, if you will, and combine those two projects so that we were able to collect $7 million from ACOG for that. And the revisions to the pay quantities, we thought we could just submit them separately, but we, ODOT has decided that they want the pay quantities and the notes combined. And so those were the minor revisions. Would recommend approval.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Jerry, when do you anticipate construction starting?
Well, right now, we're looking at sometime after the railroad underpass is complete.
Okay. Couple of years or so. All right.
Eighteen to sixteen, 16 to 18 months would be the earliest.
Okay. Thank you. We've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Sid Porter?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item carries. Item five is consider approval of an agreement with Pinnacle Consulting Management Group in the amount of $103,350 for right-of-way acquisition services for southwest 19th Street and Santa Fe Intersection Improvement Project, ODOT JP number 3614904.
Mayor and council, this is a typical right-of-way acquisition services agreement that we've always used with Pinnacle. This particular project has 10 parcels that there'll be title searches required and appraisals done. Because it is an ODOT project, there will also have to be a review of the appraisals. And so, as I said, it's a typical project with Pinnacle for those services and we'd recommend approval.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
That, excuse me, had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Sid Porter?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item carries. Item six, consider authorizing the budget to purchase of four Harris XL-185M mobile radios and associated license, licensing and accessories from L3 Harris in the amount of $24,930.40 using SourceWell contract number 042021-LH3 and SIT number 295766.
Mayor and council, these four Harris radios in question here will be for the fire station alerting systems in each of the four fire stations and it will align the Harris brand across apparatus, handhelds and portable radios as well.
Make a motion to approve?
Okay. Once this is approved, will they be installed right of way?
We'll purchase them and then work to get them installed in the stations.
Okay. Would you call the vote, please?
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Sid Porter?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item passes. Thank you. Item seven is consider authorizing the budget to purchase of 12 sets of Morning Pride Structural Firefighting Bunker gear from Municipal Emergency Service, MES, in the amount of $29,676 using SourceWell contract number 91515.
Mayor and council, all of our members are assigned their own specific set of bunker gear throughout the lifespan of the gear. It'll require periodic contamination, cleaning, laundering needs. They'll get tears and rips, need zippers replaced. And during that time, they'll be without their gear. So the purpose of this gear is to keep them in adequate and compliant loaner gear as their frontline gear gets replaced or repaired.
Okay.
Motion to approve? Second. We've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Sid Porter?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item carries. Thank you, Moore Fire Department and all the work you do. Item eight is consider authorizing replacement of the Human Machine Interface, HMI, for the switchgear portion of the backup power generator system at the Public Safety Center by Nixon Power Services in the amount of $32,850 as a sole source purchase from the manufacturer's representative.
Mayor and council, good evening. This, back in February, the computer that provides a lot of the work and brains for the backup power system at the Public Safety Center partially failed. It's still partially working, partially failed. We need to replace that. We've been working with the vendor since February to try and revive the part of the existing one that's not working. That has not been successful, so we'd recommend a replacement of this.
How old is that machine?
That particular computer is only five or six years old. We did the, it was part of the new switchgear that we installed back in 2021, I believe it was.
So is this a new machine and software or is it just?
Well, it's, it's, it's a complete, it's nothing more than a computer, but it comes with everything on it loaded.
With all the software and everything?
Yes. It will.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Would you call the vote, please?
Sid Porter?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item carries.
Thank you.
Item nine.
Nine.
Item nine is consider, and if deemed appropriate, accept nominations and elect a vice mayor. And council, did y'all get to the proposed? Yeah. And everybody's good with that? So? I make a motion, we elect Kathy Griffith.
Second.
Great. And I talked with Kathy earlier and she's happy to do that for us this year.
Thank you.
All right. We've had a, did we have a second?
Yes.
Yeah, we had a motion, a second. Would you call the vote?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Sid Porter?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Thank you, Kathy.
My honor.
Item 10 is consider appointment of Gwen Barrow as the Moore representative to the Pioneer Library System Board of Directors for a three-year term beginning July 1st, 2025.
Mayor and council, the Pioneer Library System conducted a series of interviews and brought forth Gwen Barrow's name as someone that they would like to see nominated to fill the current vacancy. I myself interviewed Gwen last week and she's here tonight. Gwen, wave at everybody so they know who you are. Anyway, had a, had a very good discussion with her and she's very excited about serving on the library board. I think she would be an excellent fit. Recommend approval.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay. And thank you for submitting your application and going through that process and representing the city of Moore to, on the Pioneer Library Board. It's a good library system and we look for a lot of good things coming from it. Glad you're a part of it. Would you call the vote, please?
Sid Porter?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item 11 is consider approving a revision to the contract with Republic Services for commercial industrial disposing beginning July 1st, 2025.
Mayor and council, this is a request from Republic and also the five-year renewal to increase the annual rate from 4% to 5% and then for this year to have the one-time reset for 10% to offset the additional costs they've had with the inflation over the last four years. The, the 4% increase they've had was not enough to cover their costs and so I felt that what they asked for was reasonable. Recommend approval.
Make a motion to approve?
This is in the budget?
Yes.
Okay. Second. And I know this is for our, as it said, commercial and industrial, not residential, and Republic has done a wonderful job for the city of Moore. Would you call the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Abstain.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Sid Porter?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item carries. At this time, we'll recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority Meeting. Item 12 is our Consent Docket.
Make a motion to approve items A and B.
Second. Would you call the vote, please? Yeah, we did.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Sid Porter?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes. Sorry.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
And we had an addendum. You gotta switch meetings, though.
I guess we could do it at the end.
Yeah, we could do it at the end when we switch back. Can we do it at the end or we need to go back? It's 11.1.
That was, city council, that was part of city council. And we're in public.
Yeah, let's finish, we'll finish. Sorry, sorry for all the confusion.
We'll get to you, Dennis. You're on deck.
Item 13, it's consider approval of the FY 2025-2026 annual budget and adopt Resolution Number 27125. Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Would you call the vote, please?
Sid Porter?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item carries. Item 14, consider, and if deemed appropriate, accept nominations and elect a vice chair of the trust.
I would like to nominate Melissa Hunt as the vice chair.
Second.
Okay. Would you call the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Sid Porter?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. She's not here, so we could just put her on everything.
Let's do that.
Item 15 is consider, and if deemed appropriate, accept nominations and elect a secretary of the trust.
I nominate Adam Webb.
Second.
Would you call the vote, please?
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Sid Porter?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item carries. We'll now recess the Moore Public Works Authority Meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management Meeting. Item 16 is our Consent Docket. Make a motion to approve items A and B.
Second.
We've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Sid Porter?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item 17, consider, and if deemed appropriate, accept nominations to elect a vice chair of the Moore Risk Management Board.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Rob Clark.
Second.
Okay. We've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Sid Porter?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item carries. Item 18 is consider, and if deemed appropriate, accept nominations and elect a secretary of the Moore Risk Management Board.
I'd like to nominate Sid Porter.
Second.
Would you call the vote?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Sid Porter?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Now, we'll recess the Moore Risk Management Meeting and convene the Moore Economic Development Authority Meeting.
Item number 19 is roll call.
Sid Porter?
Here.
Melissa Hunt? Mark Ham?
Here.
Louis Williams?
Here.
Adam Webb?
Here.
Rob Clark?
Here.
Kathy Griffith?
Here. Number 20 is the Consent Docket.
Make a motion, we approve item A.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Will you call for the vote?
Sid Porter?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes. Item carries. Item 21, consider, and if deemed appropriate, accept nominations and elect a chair of the Moore Economic Development Authority.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Councilwoman Melissa Hunt.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Will you call for the vote?
Sid Porter?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes. Motion carries. Item number 22, consider, and if deem appropriate, accept nominations and elect a vice chair of the Moore Economic Development Authority.
I'll nominate Kathy Griffith.
Second.
Would you call the vote?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Sid Porter?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Sid Porter?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes. Item carries. Item number 23, consider, and if deemed appropriate, accept nominations and elect a secretary of the authority.
I'd like to nominate Councilman Louis Williams.
Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Will you call for the vote?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Sid Porter?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes. Item carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Economic Development Authority Meeting and reconvene the city council meeting.
Now, you can do 11. Thank you. We do need to address item 11.1. It's an addendum to the regular agenda. I left that off by accident. So 11.1 is consider authorizing the purchase of CNG gas transport module from Baytech in the amount of 225,000 as a sole source provider.
Mayor, city council, this item is required in order to defuel CNG vehicles before we work on them. In the past, we just evaporate the fuel into the atmosphere, which is allowed, but it's a waste of money. Second is if there's ever an emergency and we lose our CNG facility, we can still pull up to a CNG pipe hookup and refuel our system. So it's a contingent system and I recommend approval.
We're able to re, put that fuel back into the?
Yes, sir.
Truck once it's?
Yes, there is defuels and then refuels when repairs are complete.
This is the budgeted item?
It is budgeted.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
We've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Sid Porter?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item 24, new business. Nobody, did anybody sign up? Okay, nobody signed up. Item B, items from city council trustees. Does anyone have anything? Real quick, the Moore Police Department is at the, well, not the, the color guard, not the entire department, but the color guard is at the Thunder Game and they're getting to present the colors tonight at the start of the game. So it's a great representation on behalf of our city and I know they're gonna do a great job. And just quickly, we talked a little bit about some of the GO projects and I know that a lot of times it doesn't look like much is happening, but a lot of stuff is happening. It's just that you're not seeing it right now because it's discordinating with utility companies and getting easements and all the stuff that you've heard about. So a lot is happening and once the underpass is completed, you will begin to see a lot more construction going on, on those projects that our residents have passed. So thank you for your patience with that. And item C is items from the city trust manager.
Mayor and council, starting next Monday is the, when the, is when the renovations will begin in City Hall. So they will start on the second floor. They'll be on the second floor probably for about three months and then come down to the first floor in the interim. The city attorney's office will be over at the municipal court office. Public affairs is at the emergency management conference rooms and human resources will be down at the animal shelter. Towards the end of the second floor reconstruction, I'll move downstairs, probably the conference room in there. Rhonda will be at the conference room there between the city clerk and the payroll and Jerry will be Public Works and Elizabeth will be back in her office that she used to have on the first floor. So then when we get to the first floor, we'll figure out where everyone's gonna go for three months there. So anyway, take a look at the second floor tonight because it's not gonna look that way for much longer. Jeretta Doyle, our afternoon receptionist of 20 years, retired today. So appreciate everything she's done over the years. She was a very nice lady to work with and did a great job representing the city. Would like to congratulate the department heads for all their help on the budget. There's a lot going into it and this year was a particularly tough year, so appreciate everything they did. And then Thursday night at the amphitheater at the station, the Tinker Air Force Band is giving a concert from 6:30 to 8:00. So that should be a good event. That's all I got.
Right. Well, with all of the temporary office assignments, you're gonna get an opportunity to meet some new people and some of the rumors you've heard will either be proven or dispelled. But we have a lot of great city staff, so thanks, everybody, for your flexibility with that. And item 25 is executive session. Section 305, Title 25 Oklahoma statutes permits the public body to meet an executive session for certain specified reasons under certain specified conditions. It's the opinion of the city attorney that the city council may consider and adopt a motion to meet an executive session to discuss the following items. A, consider approval of the fiscal year 2025-2026 contract between the city of Moore and the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 131 as authorized by 25 Oklahoma Statute Sections 307b2. And B, discuss, consider, and if deemed appropriate, take possible action regarding pending Cleveland County case number CJ 2023-1524 filed by Kane Law Office on behalf of Jerry Webb against the city of Moore and authorization for legal counsel and staff to take action as necessary and appropriate in the interest of the city as authorized by 25 Oklahoma State Statute Sections 307b4. Make a motion, we convene the executive session.
Second.
We've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Sid Porter?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. We'll be in executive session. Okay, we reconvene from executive session, just let the record reflect that everybody that was present is still is, as far as the council goes. And action on item A.
Make a motion that we approve the contract as presented.
Second.
We've had the motion and the second for item A, would you call the vote?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Sid Porter?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item passes, and then item B.